I hereby call to order the meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission for Wednesday, January 24, 2024. And could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Palatier. Commissioner Marhol.
Here.
Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Commissioner Matthews.
Here.
Commissioner Braun. Chairperson Hennigan.
Here. We have a quorum. Our first item is approval of minutes for the Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting minutes of November 29, 2023. Were there any comments or suggested corrections?
The meeting minutes will be provided in the next packet. I apologize.
In the next packet, okay. That explains why I don't have them. Thank you. All right. Moving on. Visitors petition, citizens' requests and communications. I see none on the agenda, which brings us to our village liaison report.
Sure. So the, I think, biggest news from the last village board meeting was the request for the Planning and Zoning Commission to reconsider the amendments for front-loaded garages and driveways. My understanding of the history of those amendments is that in 2018, those were brought before the village board. They were, the village board at that point asked that there be an ad hoc committee to consider those amendments. They were reconsidered, and then the amendments were brought back to the village board in 2020. Some of the elements of the original 2018 draft amendments were not approved in 2020. And so the requests, those were listed in the last board agenda packet. The request was, from the board, was that the Planning and Zoning Commission reconsider those changes and bring a recommendation back to the board. So that'll be on the agenda of the February meeting.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Next up is old business, review text amendments for freestanding and wall-mounted feather signs. Ann?
Sure. So this should be pretty straightforward. We've discussed this a few times. And this is, a version of the amendment is on your desk today that has two changes from what was included in the packet. Those changes are highlighted, and I'll just review those briefly and be happy to answer any questions about them. On page four, under section 4, 313, under sign controls in the B2 district, the yellow highlighted language replaces the language that talked about allowing a feather sign for the tenant in the train station. So specifically, Gears to You is located in the train station. They were one of the businesses that had a feather flag. And the intent of the ordinance is to allow Gears to You and other businesses to have those flags. All the other businesses that we surveyed as part of this process were, had either an area on the property where they could locate a freestanding feather flag, or they could do a wall-mounted flag that would be located on premises. For Gears to You, the right-of-way actually cuts through, the right-of-way line cuts through the train station. So the Blooming Bank right-of-way includes all of that portion where they might put a feather flag. So the amendment was made to the ordinance to allow for that specific location and a sign in the right-of-way, or in the public way, which normally wouldn't be allowed. And the measurement that was made to allow it within 25 feet of the primary entrance to the building was based on where the Gears to You feather flags were located. Previously, there were two flags, one in front of the columns, each of the columns, near their entrance, and the furthest away flag was 25 feet from the entrance. So this should cover and allow Gears to You to have a feather flag in the location that they had previously if they would like to. The other change is on the following page of the ordinance. It's highlighted. And this speaks to allowing some flexibility in the number of signs and locations. So I know that we previously discussed one sign per, I believe, building entrance. In reviewing the ordinance, Attorney Robert Pickrell recommended the language which specifies allowing one sign per building or 30 feet of storefront as appropriate. And it allows the zoning administrator to approve an additional feather sign per building or 30 feet of storefront with the three conditions listed, basically that the sign complies with the other regulations for those signs. So that allows some flexibility for multi-tenant buildings where you may want to have two tenants at the, who want to have a feather flag at the same time. So if you have, for example, the Arcade Building has a central entrance to the building where you'd walk in the central entrance and then go to different tenants. They also have individual entrances for tenants on the ground floor for some of those tenants. So there could be upstairs tenants theoretically who want to have a feather flag, or some sort of flag downstairs. There could be a downstairs tenant who also wants to have one. So this allows multi-tenant buildings to have more than one sign, as long as, in the opinion of the zoning administrator, it meets safety requirements. So given the limitation, the timeframe limitation on feather flags of being up for 30 days based on the village board's recommendation, there shouldn't be too many flags. It shouldn't be visually overwhelming, but this does provide some flexibility for different types of business locations. The other materials that were provided at your desk are graphics that will be included in the ordinance but weren't prepared at the time that this agenda packet was published. So the first image shows a graphic of a feather flag and provides the height of the flag and the overall size. And the second shows a wall-mounted sign, and again, shows the dimensional standards that are included in the ordinance. So the only other change to the ordinance, we just discussed two changes. The third change I want to mention is that on the last page of the ordinance, and this is not included in the packet that was provided on your desk, but is included in what was published in the agenda, is that the limitation on the number of days that flags can be displayed is 30 days. That's what was requested by the village board, and so that 90 under .4 should be scratched out and replaced with 30, and that'll be in the ordinance that's presented to the village And I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have or discuss this further.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Ann?
Um, yes.
Of course.
On the description of the packet where you list the buildings in the central business district that could not display freestanding, I assume that means that they can use building mounted signs?
They can have building awning signs. It doesn't preclude the use of any other permitted flag, so building awning signs would be included, and they could also have the wall-mounted flag, if it worked with awning, space-wise.
Yeah, I was just verifying that.
Yes.
Basically, it was just the issue of where, if there is a ground location, they don't have it, so they then have to default to building mounted if they so choose to have the feather sign. Thank you.
Yes?
So I was in the meeting where we discussed this initially, and so I'd ask anyone to fill in the blanks. So this went to the board, and they came back with this, right? And they said, one of their major changes was the flags can only be up for 30 days. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And what was our initial recommendation? Did we have one?
It was 90 days was the most recent recommendation.
Yeah. So, I mean, I'm not going to vote in support of this for 30 days because it's pointless. You know, the genesis of this was a guy who owns a bike shop. And so basically, if this passes with the 30 days, he can have a flag up just two and a half days a month, or for one month straight, or once a week for six months. And I just don't see, I don't see the point. I mean, I think there may be other entities which they're having a sale, they want to put a flag up, I get that, or if, you know, they, one of our many designers has a new line in from Paris, you know, maybe that's what they want to note. But it just, it just doesn't make any, I don't think this helps anyone, the way it stands. I don't think the 30 days is at all useful. It doesn't give, you know, it doesn't solve the initial issue that came to us. And I know this is more than just one person, but I think we have to take that into account. And then the other thing that concerns me is, you know, who's going to enforce this? You know, I think one of the worst things you can do as a municipality is pass rules and ordinances and laws that aren't enforced. And this, I don't, I mean, is anyone going to enforce this? Is this like, would this fall under the purview of the building inspector? Would this, would we have to wait for complaints from citizens? And if so, how are they going to prove that it's been up too long? Are they going to have to take a picture of it every day and timestamp it? I just, and that's, that's a more minor concern, but when you're getting down to the 30-day things, I think it becomes more problematic because then you might get people who are really, you know, tracking the feather flag. So, I mean, you know, my feeling would be ask the board why they, I mean, there's no one here from the board, so I don't know. Maybe someone has the discussions and knows why they want the 30 days instead of 90. I don't, I should have looked that up, and I didn't. But I, to me, it just guts the whole, the whole thing. I don't see any point in doing it. I mean, if they don't want this, then don't do it. Don't make it so difficult to do that nobody will do it.
Sure. Just to provide a little bit of context, so the intention, although it's not ideal, would be to have folks submit an application at the start of the year, whatever during the year they want to submit, and say, you know, here's when we want to have the flags up. And if they want to update that throughout the year, they can send us a new schedule. We would check against that. It is administratively more work, certainly, and that would probably fall to, you're exactly correct, the building inspectors out in the field more to follow up on that. And the, at the last board meeting, there was folks who were in favor of allowing feather flags and folks who were not. And I believe this was considered more of a compromise position, and I'm not sure what the genesis behind 30 days was, but that was the recommendation, so.
I have questions, too. And first, I wanted to say that I did have time to look at what the board discussed. And it was a three-to-three vote with President Pollock breaking the tie to present this ordinance with 30 days, so it was a close vote. But I had a few questions, which, one of them is, can you clarify for us, who can put a sign up in the B2 and the B1 district? What entities? I mean, how do you have the right to put a sign up? I'm thinking, is it any business that's there? Is it like someone in an apartment who lives in there, they could put, or is it, do you have to be a business or a nonprofit entity, or somehow, you know, a concern with clients or something?
Sure. So you don't need to be a for-profit. So if you had, for example, the Lynn Pestoral Center.
Yes, I saw it in the list.
If they wanted to identify themselves with a sign, of course, they can put up a sign. So typically, I can't imagine, I don't know of a circumstance where a, someone in an apartment would put up a sign. If they had, you know, I guess, as a political sign or some sort of message they want to put in a window, they could, of course, put that in their window.
What if they were a seamstress, or maybe that's old-fashioned?
Sure. Yeah. But basically, we have limitations on, for, based on district, not on use, for, you know, awning signs, window signs, wall signs, and so all of the dimensions are all listed in the sign code.
Right.
So you could just submit an application if you want to put up a permanent sign.
Well, for instance, one of the things I'm thinking about is, I'm thinking about, one of the businesses that you, were not listed, or the addresses that weren't listed, were 10 East Burlington and 28 to 30 East Burlington. So let's say if there's, I don't know if the condo at the Village Center, if there's a business there that manages them, or if it's an off-site business that manages them, but what if they wanted to put out, you know, a feather sign, condo available or something like that? Would that be allowed? And what about for the proposed building at 28 to 30? They have rental apartments. Every time maybe they have apartments open, could they put out a feather flag, subject to the limitations of 30 days? Because that's a business that's there. So I'm trying to think of the scope of the number of feather flags that could be out, you know, even though it's limited to 30 days, but randomly throughout the business district by various businesses.
Sure. Can you remind me again, so let me speak to the one that I remember off the top of my head, which is the new proposed apartment building?
Yes.
So they have an area that is set back 10 feet from the property line.
Right.
So yes, they could put, they could put a feather flag up, now leasing, or the proposed businesses in the, in the ground floor, the live-work units.
Right.
Yes, they could put up a feather flag. There's nothing there, so I didn't list it on, on the list. That's in the memo. The other addresses that you mentioned were, was it 10 East Burlington?
The Village Center, you know, the condominium, the building right next to it.
Yes. So I listed.
And you did list, like, the dentist and, but I'm wondering if, like, there's a rent, not a rental, but a building management. I don't know, I didn't drive by there. But if there are other businesses in there that, like, that manage the condos and could say, you know, condo for sale, or whatever, I don't know.
Oh, oh, oh.
I'm just trying to think of potential.
For like a real estate sign?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I guess theoretically, if you wanted to list a condo, and it's in the B2 district, and you wanted to put up a feather flag, I suppose that's permissible, sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it falls to the ordinance in front of us, which is A2, the one that's highlighted, is the zoning administrator can approve an extra sign for 30 feet of frontage. So I think that's where it falls.
Right. But I'm thinking, for instance, for the rental building, they could have one or more feather flags out there without asking for permission, as long as it's within restrictions.
Unless, but, but subject to the fact that if the business is below, already have a sign, then you're going to get more than one per 30-foot of frontage.
Possibly. I'm just trying to visualize what it's going to look like. If we assume every business in the B2 district along Burlington, in, from the, you know, month of July, wants to have a feather flag out there for 30 days, or four days a week, four days a month, like June, July, August, or something, it could, I'm just trying to visualize what that's going to look like. And on top of that, the wall-mounted flags. So I'm just trying to see what the impact of that will be. So that's why I'm raising the question as to who can put one out. And then the, the wall flag, I know, as I recall, when we discussed the wall flags at our meeting, I was thinking of like a flag, and we talked about a three-by-five.
Sure.
And then the photo here that was with the packet for the village board, and then the graphic you have here shows like a real flag, although smaller than three-by-five. But then when I look at the definition of a feather flag, there's no definition of wall-mounted flag. So what I imagine is it's, it says like vertically supported, et cetera, et cetera. I was imagining sort of a feather flag that could be up to 15 feet wide, vertically supported or whatever, as a pennant style. So that could be up to 10 feet long, mounted on the wall. I mean, not a three-by-five, like, standard rectangular flag.
Okay.
So I wonder if that's a weakness of the proposal.
So the definition of feather flag does include temporarily mounted on a wall? Let's see. And I believe it specifies that wall-mounted flags may be limited to 15 square feet in size, so your three-by-five type flag. And the reason that we use the smaller version is, I think, practically speaking, because a flag that's hanging on a pole like that would kind of collapse in on itself, it's actually visually easier for a small flag that kind of stays open. Those are the ones that I've seen that are, you could put a flag out, I suppose, but if there's a decoration or any kind of message on the flag, you know, sale or something like that, the larger flags tend to fold in on themselves and don't, unless there's wind. So typically, probably, if you want an effective flag, you'd probably want a smaller one in that case, which is why we use that as a graphic.
I don't know that much about flags and advertising. I assume that people who have a flag, like the one that's shown in the picture, somehow it's stiffened so that it doesn't fall in on itself if it's actually used with extra starch. I don't know, special materials or something, so that it's not falling in on itself. But my point, my, my point besides the size of what was shown as not being three-by-five flags, is that the design, the definition of feather signs, and it's not to be critical, because maybe it was just thrown in here. The definition is, means a temporary sign constructed of a single vertical pole, either freestanding with supports or temporarily mounted on a wall, with an attached pennant that is vertically elongated and attached to the pole and is designed to, or does wave or move in the wind. So what I was imagining, basically, you're describing a feather flag, but it could be wall-mounted. And so it could be one and a half feet wide, like a feather flag is, and that means if it's 15 square feet, it could be 10 feet long, but stuck in a, on a wall mount. So I'm just thinking that if we want like a standard three-by-five flag, maybe we need to add more verbiage there to describe that. Does that make sense?
Is the section on, and I apologize, there are pages that I'm referring to.
It's under definitions.
Yeah. And is the section that I was looking at, which is, I believe it's page five, it's A, and it has a list of all of the standards that they have to comply to.
Right.
And so I guess my assumption was that specifying the size limitations within for ground-mounted versus wall-mounted flags effectively resolves that issue?
Right. I'm not sure if it does, because, again, I'm not trying to be difficult, but let's say someone had a pennant, and they decide, well, I don't want to put it out, or I'm not allowed to put it out, I'm going to make a wall mount, and I'm going to put it, you know, three feet up off the ground, it's going to start there, it's not going to protrude more than 42 inches, but it's going to come out like this, and it's just, I just don't think that's going to look appropriate.
I think there's sufficient other elements in the ordinance.
I don't think there is, and I think probably someone should test it out.
I have to disagree.
And then you have a picture of what a feather flag is.
Yes.
It's not a flag flag, it's a feather flag, in the definition.
A feather flag is allowed to be 10 feet tall.
Yes.
We've got elements in the ordinance that note that it can't extend above the cornice line or second-floor window line, whichever is lower.
Yes, I understand.
We have the, shall not obstruct the view, or path. That means if it's flapping in the breeze and it's crossing someone's walking path, it's a no.
Right. But you can imagine a feather sign, it also says each feather sign may be up to 10 feet tall from the bottom of the base, subject to other requirements. So I can imagine something like this being stuck on the side of a building at an angle appropriate, that it's not going to interrupt the cornice line, or maybe not 10 feet tall, maybe it's eight feet tall.
Right.
So, but that, we would have something that looks like the feather sign, which we have a picture of. And in the definition, there's no picture of a standard flag, it's only a picture of a feather sign, which is a pennant sign, and that that could be applied. So I think, I'm just thinking that that should be something, if we proceed with this ordinance, it should be double-checked, that someone could not put something like that up as their feather flag wall-mounted sign, as opposed to a standard rectangular.
And I'm not sure which, and I apologize, so in trying to prepare the ordinance and make some changes to fine-tune to what we're getting at. Attorney Pickrell sent the version that I'm looking at, which is the highlighted version.
Yes.
And I had gone through and, trying to explain this, when I, before I published the agenda, I made sure that the version that he sent included specifications for each standard, if it was specified, whether it was wall-mounted or ground-mounted. I think in point eight, of what you have in front of you with the highlighted version, I think if you, after the word each, after number eight, just specify ground-mounted, I think that could resolve the issue, because I believe ground-mounted should have been in the version that you received in the packet, it's possible I missed it. But that way, it'll specify that the, each ground-mounted feather sign may be up to 10 feet tall from the bottom of the base to the top of the sign. And that would eliminate the idea of having a wall-mounted sign that was 10 feet tall.
Uh-huh.
So that, that could address, I believe, what you're trying to get at.
Well, you could say in number 10, it says each wall-mounted feather sign may be up to 15 square feet. You could say with dimensions of no greater than, you know, three-by-five, or something like that. So you don't have an eight-by-one-and-a-half.
Sure, no, no more than five feet in any direction, or something like that.
I don't know, something like that. I can just imagine someone saying, I got this pennant sign, I'm going to stick it in the wall here. And then, like I said, what makes it even more compelling to me is the fact that we have a picture of a feather sign, and that's a feather sign. And then the definition and the section you're referring to, Planner Siren keeps using the term feather sign, feather sign. So it's a minor point, just one that I, and I have other issues with the, with the ordinance, but that's just a minor point.
Is your concern that, for example, if we looked at the example of the wall-mounted feather sign, is your concern that if you elongated the example sign, that it would be hanging down, you'd have a long vertical sign hanging down from the wall?
No.
Okay.
Not necessarily. I think if it looked like a pennant, like what we're, what is a feather sign.
Okay.
Like the Gears to You feather sign, it wouldn't flap that much, because it's only one and a half feet wide, and it has a curve over the top, so it's going to be relatively controlled. It's just, that's not the look, I think, we discussed before, we discussed like a standard-looking flag, and not a feather sign. That's what I was envisioning when we had our discussion before, was a standard-looking rectangular flag shape, not a feather sign that is stuck into the wall.
Okay. So if it was, if the sign that was wall-mounted was, were the same dimensions of the feather sign that's shown in the example?
Yeah.
So effectively, a long rectangle. You're concerned that having a long rectangle-type sign mounted on the wall would get in the way?
It looks, no, I'm just thinking, it looks unsightly.
Okay.
It's not the kind of sign that this is, in this picture. That's a nice little flag, right?
Okay.
That's kind of like a blade sign, in aesthetics.
Okay.
And if we had, you know, a tire shop type of pennant, you know, feather sign stuck into the wall, that's not, it's just, I, I think I've said enough. That's my concern. I had a few other, I had a couple other questions. Could you, could you review for us which businesses have expressed interest to you or to the EDC or anyone else besides Gears to You about saying that they do intend to have feather signs, either wall-mounted or freestanding?
Sure. So the business involvement that we had began with Gears to You primarily. They were the, the primary folks. And let me see if I can find, and jog my memory in the background, because we did have a few businesses in the summer who used those flags. I'm not sure if I included that in the memo, I apologize. I think folks noted that Riverside Art Center, I believe, has a feather flag that they'll pull out, and they have a cement bucket that they put out.
Mm-hmm.
I believe that the, one of the schools had one. Oh, Goodfellas, the barber shop on Harlem Avenue, had one. And then I believe when Starbucks opened, I believe they did have a feather flag out on their site, too. So there were some on Harlem, and then some in the central business district. Now, since we've had the conversation, the primary business that we've been talking to is Gears to You. And then we did reach out to, when this initially started, the conversation, we reached out to the EDC, the Economic Development Commission, and asked what their opinion was, and they were in favor of allowing more signage. They were effectively in favor of, pretty close to what the commission had originally recommended, which I think was more like 90 days, allowing the signs up. But generally, they felt that allowing the flags would be beneficial for businesses. So that's the, the feedback that we've received. If we do have, the ordinance passed, and we have new regulations, we'll have an outreach effort with local businesses and get a better sense of how many folks actually want to use this. And the intention is to have an application submitted, so it's not just, you're free to use feather flags as you will. So they, you would submit an application, like you would for any other sign permit. We would ask folks, depending on how many days they're up, to specify which days those would be, so we can check against them when they're up, and, you know, provide an example of the flag, so that we can make sure it meets all the standards. So that, that's the intention of enforcement.
Okay. So, okay, sounds like, okay. Okay. Let's see, if I had any other questions specifically. I don't think I have any other specific question. I would, I would just note that the village board didn't discuss the wall-mounted feather signs at all at their meeting. And I don't know if they did it in an earlier meeting, I only watched the December 7th one. So when I saw the wall-mounted in here, I was a little surprised that they didn't mention that at all as an issue for any of them.
The focus at the board meetings has been on the freestanding.
The freestanding ones, right. Okay.
All right. Any other questions for Ann?
Sorry. I just want to, you know, someone's mentioned earlier, could, under this ordinance, then, can, can anything go on these signs? Like, could someone use, could a business owner use them to make a political statement?
Sure.
So you, you could have someone put up a Trump or Biden sign?
Sure.
Or a pro or anti-abortion sign?
Yeah.
See, that's really the problem. And it puts the village in a horrible position, because we can't, you know, you're getting the First Amendment issues. I mean, you know, there's nothing wrong with someone putting up a sign in their store window, right? But I mean, this is on village property, or not, is it village property, or it's on the sidewalk?
So the only one where it would be on village property would be the Blooming Bank right-of-way, which is a right-of-way.
Okay.
But otherwise, it would be, yes, located on private property. And that was something that Attorney Pickrell mentioned when we discussed it, is the importance of making sure that sign regulations are content neutral.
But they're, they don't, but they're not. Are they content neutral? Oh, all the sign regulations.
They must be content neutral.
Yeah.
Regulations have to be content neutral.
Right. Exactly.
They have to be content neutral.
Yes, the regulations, yeah.
And not diminish in what you're saying, but someone could have an awning and paint something on it as well. So, you know, permanently mounted awning to the building, they could have whatever message have whatever message they want there. So I'm not, I'm not sure there's that much for, and maybe there's a little bit of additional risk that someone uses a temporary, we'll call it temporary fluttery sign for some kind of messaging. But is it significantly more of a risk than any other method of projecting one's opinion?
I would say yes. I would agree.
I think in a way, because it, what you're talking about is then you're, you're, you're doing something to your own, your own property and not just putting it on the si, on the sidewalk. I mean, I think there's a distinction between repainting, you know, go Biden, go Trump on my awning, and, and, or putting up a, a feather sign that says the same thing. And it's not even, I mean, it's, it's not even, you know, macro politics. It's like, you know, local politics, are people gonna, if, um, you know, gaming comes down the pike again, are people gonna put pro and anti-gaming signs up? Um, you know, and then, it just opens up a lot of problems. I think the whole, the whole thing, the more I think about it, which I'm sorry, it wasn't, wasn't at that meaning.
I know, I think that, that's one thought, but I think if we're gonna go with content neutral, then, well, we have to take the risk that someone does put something objectionable out, because the goal is to allow businesses which need probably a little bit more publication in town than, than otherwise. Um, they need the additional opportunities to try and advertise and catch your eye.
Twice a month.
Well, I, I, I agree with Commissioner Matthews. And, and playing off of one of the other comments that you made, is how it's only 30 days. Gears to You owns their feather signs. I would guess, even if it's 30 days, they will probably put them out. I don't know if other businesses will, because of exactly what you said. Um, it's like, why would you make the investment unless you had a special sale or something like that? But they already own their feather signs, so I would guess that they would, would use them. But I do agree that, in addition to the clutter, to have people near election seasons for whatever issue it is, or property tax raises, or whatever it could be, to start investing a small amount to put out a feather sign, as opposed to painting over their own awning, I guess you could put, I don't know, you know, you could put a temporary awning up or whatever. It just seems like it, it could invite issues that we don't necessarily want to invite.
Is it any different than, um, the temporary signs that we already allow, though? I mean, we have, we do allow temporary signs, so they can put any message on those signs. It's just different type of temporary sign.
Are those, sorry, are those seven days, though?
No, they're not. Uh, the sandwich boards, you can have, there's no time limitation on sandwich boards. Uh, in terms of a temporary window sign, I think we allow temporary window signs for a certain amount of time as a replacement for a permanent sign. But if you just wanted to have a temporary sign, you know, sale on, you know, whatnot, um, you can have that up. And, you know, it's kind of encouraged to draw business.
Right. Well, the point of the feather signs is to get, attract, attract people's notice. That's.
It's advertising.
Every sign.
Yes.
Yeah.
But more than a blade sign. So there was, so this is another issue I want to get into later when we have the discussion period, but why this is different than a blade sign. But anyway. We could discuss now. I'm just saying, I wonder, so my, my concern is that I think the Gears to You business is in a very unique location. They don't have a lot of pedestrian traffic. They have vehicular traffic, especially someone coming with their bike to get fixed, for instance. So I'm not even sure a blade sign with this limit that we have in size, which is six square feet, which is smaller than the flag that we're proposing here for a wall-mounted sign, if that would even satisfy their, their need, even if it was allowed. Um, I, you know, so, I, I think they're, so what I would propose going down the road, I mean, I really, okay, before I propose this, could you, Planner Siren, at all discuss, at the board meeting, there was some discussion, I think, uh, Trustee Gallego said something like, well, let's have a dry run for 2024. But if we have an ordinance that does not have, not have an expiration date on it, could we, and I know you're not, could the village face any kinds of issues later on by saying, oh, well, you know, it was a dry run for 2024, and all these businesses bought these feather signs, but we didn't like how it looked, so now we're gonna revoke it. I mean, could that, can you foresee any issues?
Again, laws can change. They change with administrations and.
It'd be like the Airbnb thing, right?
Yeah.
A lot of Airbnbs, and then saw what happened with that, and then said, okay, no.
Yeah. There was only one.
You can't handle it.
One, one, one organization that did that, but I'm just concerned about.
Be similar.
Well, there was one, there was one provider who caused a lot of stress through the community. There may have been others who were operating, and because they were smart enough to not create tension and not create bad vibes with their neighbors, that might have been perfectly legit. Um, but one bad apple does spoil the whole thing. And we may need to revisit this ordinance in a year with suggestions from the Village Board that there's certain aspects that need to be tightened up, including your thoughts about, is a 10-foot-long pennant too much?
Right.
And I'm, at this, right now, I want to say that I'm trusting that there's enough here, um, as well as zoning administrator has enough room in the way this is written to make some good judgment calls when something gets out of hand.
Well, what I would like to, what I would propose for consideration is that this ordinance be limited to either the train station or the, um, the B2 public use zone, which is basically the train station. And that leads me to another question also. So why, why does, why does the exception written into the ordinance apply only to businesses on the south side of the tracks? Why doesn't it apply to any businesses on the north side of tracks, like the barber shop that's there? Why was that not allowed for them to be, for them to have a feather sign in the public right-of-way? And they're not listed as being able to have a feather sign in your listed businesses?
Sure. So in that case, because there's no, um, there is really not a lot of room on that side of the barber shop that is not in the public way. Um, so it, it's hard to describe without a visual, and I apologize, but, so in the train, the way that the property lines are laid out, the public way includes a lot of walking area, uh, outside of, of the train station. So all of that, that plaza area.
Right.
Is all public way.
Right.
Whereas on the other side of the tracks, the public way is effectively parking in a drive aisle. And when I went by, it just didn't seem like there was sufficient room there to safely have a feather flag. That's where you'd have a wall-mounted flag in that case, and they would be allowed to have that if they wanted to.
They would be allowed, yeah.
Um, so that was the distinction between the two.
Well, I, so my proposal would be, uh, for discussion, is limiting this ordinance to the B2 public use zone and/or to businesses in the train station, because I do think that this business, as a number of people have said, you know, you might not expect there to be a store like this in the train station. It's not like walking down Burlington or Quincy and you see storefronts and all the rest. It's unusual. So maybe they need to be able to get more attention. But I don't think that same rationale applies to other businesses in the, in the B2, and not the B1TC district, the transitional district, I don't think. Um, those would be my, my major concerns. So, because this was proposed was by a business in a unique space, that they have no com, no ability to overcome their limitations in advertising their presence, because the way the building is constructed, and the way the road goes by and all the rest, I think it would be appropriate to have that limitation.
Any other, uh, general discussion?
I don't think that Gears to You is the, um, the only business that could benefit from, um, this type of ordinance. You know, as you've indicated, several other businesses and the school, there's kind of, um, I don't wanna say demand for it, but there's certainly a desire for it. I can see on Harlem Avenue where there's a lot of vehicular traffic that you might want to draw some attention. So, um, I, I think the need for the ordinance is, has been demonstrated. I agree with John that the 30 days is, seems very short and possibly, um, diminishes the impact of the ordinance. Maybe it's a compromise to start with 30, and we can reconsider it, as we see that there's not, you know, an unreasonable amount of clutter, clutter in the right-of-way. But I think that, um, I think the ordinance is reasonable as it's presented. The, the, the risk of unsavory messages, though it's there, it's always been there. And, you know, you, to some extent, you have to, I don't wanna say depend on your businesses, but, you know, historically, that hasn't really been a huge issue. So I don't know why the introduction of this particular type of sign as a temporary sign. We already have temporary signs. If it hasn't come up before, I'm not sure that it's a significant concern.
To share my thoughts on it, um, I do think that this could provide a valuable resource for our businesses to provide another way to promote themselves. Um, I'm also disappointed that the board, uh, wanted to limit it to only 30 days. I don't think that gives them enough flexibility to really do what they may need to do. Um, but hopefully, they'll be willing to revisit that in the future. Um, and I can see Commissioner Miller's concerns about the wall-mounted signs, and, but I think that if we make just the quick changes that we suggested about in Section A8, each ground-mounted feather sign may be up to 10 feet tall, and then in A10, limiting the size to no more than five feet in any direction, I think that will get us to that size of a, a normal flag that I think we all envisioned when we talked about this in the first place.
May I also suggest, to your point, perhaps we can put two figures, um, where we define feather sign. We could have figure one, example of a, um, base feather sign, and then figure two, perhaps.
The intention was to, to label each one, example of a ground-mounted feather sign, example of a wall-mounted feather sign.
Along with the additional verbiage, I think that would be helpful.
I don't particularly have an issue with the feather flags in the B1 district. It's not the B1TC district. I think the B1TC district is adjacent to neighbors, you know, residential neighborhood and all the rest. So I, I don't think it's appropriate there. Um, don't think they're appropriate in the historic B2 district. We have special sign regulations for the historic B2 district for certain reasons, you know, purpose and intent. Um, so, yeah, that would be my opinion. I'm willing to allow it in B1 along Harlem, which is basically just Harlem, and the train station. And I would just note that the schools are not, would not be allowed under this to have feather signs. It's not being extended to any of the residential districts.
Right, any further discussion?
I have a question just regarding process.
Sure.
Because we made these recommendations that went to the board. We are a recommending body on this particular. So, it seems that the zoning, Planning and Zoning Commission has, is of the opinion that 30 days is insufficient. Um, we can send a recommendation that that be increased. The board is perfectly able to kind of, I don't wanna say ignore that, but, um, not accept it.
If you'd like to make a recommendation to increase that time limit, uh, a, a, previously, we've discussed, I believe, 45 days, we've discussed 90 days. There seemed to be consensus for 90 days previously, and if you'd like to attach that to the recommendation, I'd be happy to share that with the board, and, and the reason behind it.
I would support Commissioner Pelletier's recommendation. The, and as well as Commissioner Matthews, 30 days is just not, doesn't seem realistic. It's too little.
The, um, I believe when we discussed 45 days, I believe the reasoning behind that was, for example, Gears to You specifically, I believe has most of their business during the summer. If you counted up weekends during the summer, and then added, you know, 4th of July holiday, Labor Day, Memorial Day, that's about 45 days. And so that was the, one of the, the reasonings, and I think we discussed that, and then the recommendation was 90 days, so. Uh, or the second recommendation is 90 days, excuse me.
Do we have a consensus on what that number might be? We were at a consensus of 90.
That was the latest consensus.
I, yeah, I would be fine with 90. I mean, I would, I would stick with that, although now, you know, Commissioner Miller has got me rethinking this whole thing about where these should be located. In all, in all seriousness, like, I, I do think, and, you know, from my perspective, maybe the trial run should be at the train station and on Harlem Avenue, as opposed to in the, uh, Central Business District. But then, you'd never know what the Central Business District would look like, if people put up signs. So we'd be no further ahead, I suppose. Um, so, and I realize that I'm all over the place, saying, well, I want it longer, but I don't want it at all, so I, I'll take that for what it's worth. But if we're gonna do it, it should be, it should be useful, and I think 90 days is useful.
I like 90 days with the way it's currently written and the understanding that we may need to revisit this in a year, because somebody abuses it. And we have that option. There is no such thing as laws that are permanent.
So question, what would, what's the kind of thing that you would consider abuse, other than violating the rules? Like having your blades, your feather sign up consistently beyond, on days that you didn't tell the village you were supposed to?
That's a violation. Um, we know that it says here that it's supposed to be well-maintained. I can see that becoming an issue if someone buys too cheap of a, a message.
I don't know that it needs to rise to the standard of abusing the regulations. Um, after we see these regulations implemented, we can see how things sort of shake out, and it may be after a year we decide, you know, as a village, we don't like how these look, and we need to make some adjustments.
And we need to refine the rules. And that's okay.
Well, just as long as we can couch and, and, and say like, this is aesthetically displeasing to us, so we want to get rid of it. I mean, because that's really, that's where I would see it going. I, I don't think it's gonna be, oh, these are all ratty and ragged, because they, some will be, I mean, if it happens. But I, I really do think it's gonna be like, one morning, we're gonna wake up and go, oh, God. And that's how, I'm not saying we will for sure, but that's how I would see it shaking out if it is a problem.
To be honest, John, I would say if the community starts saying this really doesn't look great.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, maybe we have, we have an emergency meeting. That's happened, too.
Yeah.
Um, there's always the potential for things to go south. I think, right now, this is good enough where it can be tested out.
Yeah, I like the idea that Trustee Gallego suggested of considering it as a trial run and sort of seeing how it works. With that, any further discussion, or would anyone like to make a motion?
I believe we recommend the changes as presented, um, except that we recommend a 90-day limit rather than 30.
I'd like to second that.
All right. And although this is not a public hearing, I would still like to go through the standards for text amendments. Um, number one, the extent to which the proposed amendment promotes the public health, safety, comfort, convenience, and general welfare of the village.
You think so?
Yes, promotes the convenience for the businesses, for sure. Number two, the relative gain to the public as compared to the hardship imposed upon the applicant.
Yes, and we're treating it that it could be changed later.
Yes. Number three, the consistency of the proposed amendment with village plans. I think this is in support of economic development in general. Uh, number four, the consistency of the proposed amendment with the intent and general regulations of the zoning ordinance.
Yes.
Yes. Number five, whether the proposed amendment corrects an error or omission, adds clarification to existing requirements, or reflects a change in policy. This would be a change in policy.
Change in policy.
Number six, that the proposed amendment will benefit the residents of the village as a whole, and not just the applicant, property owners, neighbors of any property under consideration, or other special interest groups, and the extent to which the proposed would be in the public interest and would not serve solely the interest of the applicant. Yes, would be for the village as a whole. Number seven, whether the proposed amendment provides a more workable way to achieve the intent and purposes of the zoning ordinance and village plans. Say yes, that's our intent here. Number eight, the extent to which the proposed amendment creates non-conformities. It should not. And number nine, the extent to which the proposed amendment is consistent with the overall structure and organization of the zoning ordinance.
Yes.
Yes. All right. With that, Ann, could you please call the roll?
Sure. Mr. Pelletier?
Aye.
Mr. Marlowe?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
No.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mr. Brahm?
Aye.
Sheriff Snodgin?
Aye. Motion passes. All right. Uh, the only piece of information I have is that our next meeting will be on Wednesday, February 26. Wednesday, February 28. And unless anyone else has anything else to share, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.